I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I would like to call the meeting of the Airport Commission to order. Okay, clerk's compliance, I'll read it in accordance with the South Carolina Code of Laws, nineteen seventy-six, section three dash four dash eighty D. As amended, notification of the meeting and the meeting agenda were posted at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting on the County Council Building, a publicly accessible place, on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media. And all persons or organizations requesting notification. I'll do the pledge, and would you some of you like to do the invocation?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice on all.
Y'all back heads, Lord heavenly Father, watch over those two commissions to God and give them the guns they need and the strength they need to get through this, and Lord, watch over everybody here, all our servicemen at home and abroad. And help us, America, amen.
Amen. This is very awkward here now, sorry. The council would like to approve the agenda of the County Council. Any discussion? Hearing none. Like to have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Was there any comment? Hearing no comment, all is a better vote, ready to write in.
Yay.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none, motion's passed.
Without a forum?
Yes. You're gonna be a commentator while we're having this.
Well, sorry. Congratulations, though. Workshop is fine without a forum, so they don't need to call to work because they can't get close to calling. So, uh, workshop is fine without a forum, you may begin.
Okay. Okay, then we don't have a forum. Okay. Leases, Mr. Andy, could you start it off, please?
I'm sure I can, I mean, we had, if you remember the last short workshop you had, I can't recall when that was, but it was in the same room, and we talked about that, and we talked about leases, and we've talked about leases all of them a lot, with the staff and County Council the last few years. We have Mr. Ceccharelli on board now, we have a new council member. Had him learn all this, learned years of history very quickly, so we appreciate you, and he's been very good at asking a lot of questions and reviewing the information, so, um, thank you, Ceccharelli, appreciate it. You know the rest of the folks, and we've all been working on this, the latest thing that you were responding to was a resolution that was drafted for council's consideration, the last council meeting. Council deferred that until they had a workshop with you, the Airport Commission to go through that. I understand that, Mr. Dean, you have attributed some sort of, uh, notice or something to those today, and if all the council members have that, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we just allow, uh, Mr. Dean to go through that with you, sort of the response to, to that resolution.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, and thanks for the opportunity to help resolve this six-year-old saga of the airport lease, if you don't mind just re- read this document into the record. Council has heard from its staff more than a half a decade that the FAA has mandated all leases to have a virginary provisions, and further, the county must take ownership of all hangers that end of such leases, leases or risk forfeiting already extended grant monies and potentially access to any further FAA funds. Council has also heard that the county already owns all hangers with currently expired leases. Despite what council has been told, the Airport Commission and local aviators have told council from the start, there is no such mandate from the FAA. This fact is verified in an eight-one-two-five email from the FAA, copied to you. In that email, the author writes in a quote, "FAA is not a party to local airport agreements, permits, or contracts, and therefore does not dictate or comment." It also states, "Airport sponsor Jasper County may also propose other methods that may be reasonable under local circumstances." And the FAA does not direct or dictate actions that an airport sponsor must take to remedy specific non-compliance concerns. Given these facts, there is no FAA mandate to revert privately owned and maintain hangers to Jasper County ownership. And with specific reference to the second staff claim, Jasper County does not own any hangers at the airport, confirmed by the fact that the county still bills all hangar owners annual property taxes, and that the county readily accepts. It's an open and public accomplishment that the hangers are in fact taxpayer-owned, and that an implied contract exists between the hangar owners and Jasper County. Considering the realities, do we want to avoid more adverse legal actions and stop means needlessly wasting taxpayer dollars on outside law firms trying to defend the county since unsupported policies that you were led to lead are required? If so, let's throw Resolution twenty, R. twenty-two-five dash forty-seven into the trash where it belongs and start fresh with decisions that are mutually beneficial to Jasper County and your hangar owner partners, who, like yourselves, are widely interested in the continued success and future viability of the tourism Claudine Airport. Adopting more unnecessary and hard-headed policies like this proposed leasing policy will only bring more pain. Resulting legal actions will drag on for years, all potential revenue can cost taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars in return fees trying to defend contrary to the stat- misguided statute. What would a fair lease policy do for Jasper County? You restore the flow of revenue to lease payments and increase yields as well as continued property tax payments. There is no unwanted burden for hangar maintenance, liability, utilities, or managing individual lease agreements with some seventy they spare for a hangar. Please note, in the Resolution R. twenty-two-five dash four-seven in section A, for hangers becoming property of the county, Mr. Tetter wrote, "Rentals will be as is in their present condition. Any repairs are at the option of the tenant, with no obligation for repairs or maintenance on the county." So what common sense terms would make a lease that's good for the airport, hangers, taxpayers, and hangar owners? Offer a longer lease, a twenty to twenty-five year lease, for all existing hangers with an option for renewal in five-minute, uh, five-year increments, with Airport Commission or county approval. This lease period such as this would permit local banks to participate in financing new hangar infrastructure and assist current owners with major upgrades and necessary maintenance. No reversion clause. If the county wants the hangar, buy at market value, that's been done at other airports. Allow sale of hangers and transfer of lease with Airport Commission or county approval. Based ground lease rates on similar airports in the region with privately owned hangers. Make all lease payments due on the same date, reducing the likelihood of lease less than missing a payment, reducing administrative headaches, ensuring they're consistent, predictable, and timely streaming revenue. On lease rates, Mr. Tetter is proposing an astronomical increase in lease rates for hangers that are privately owned as well as those who hopefully think have been reverted to county under such futile lease expirations. For those privately owned and fully maintained hangers with current leases, he is proposing a rate that is ten times the current rate. For hangers they hope to confiscate and not maintain, the rate would increase thirty-two times over. The current council approved annual rate, annual rate, at originally was twenty-eight cents per square foot, but many existing hangar leases are still at fifteen cents per square foot, with terms that call for rate adjustments based on CPI, annual CPI increases. If you apply the CPI increase of approximately thirty-six percent over the last ten years, that fifteen cent rate would now be twenty. Mr. Tetter is proposing to charge forty cents per square foot monthly. How much these privately owned hangers at our airport cost the county? I've not heard of any such thing. No, that's because the answer is literally zero, and that simply doesn't fit well with the phony narrative being pushed. Please remember that these hangers are not the cause of the airport's unprecedented $1.6 million budget. In fact, all but two of these hangers were owned in the field when the county was spending less than $6,000 a year to operate and maintain the airport. In summary, the ongoing pain in the neck over airport lease rules certainly be inflamed by adopting Mr. Tetter's proposed lease policy. However, that pain can quickly be relieved by adopting fair-minded, common-sense lease policies and rates to get the revenue flowing again and open a clear path for additional revenues to redevelopment or meeting FAA obligations, respectively. And for the time to put that in the record.
Mr. Dean? I'll let others go first. I'll let others go first.
I think we have two different things to worry about here. My whole thing is, we have contracts out there, and some of them expire, right?
Yeah.
And so, we follow the contract, you're bound by it, whoever signed it, county used to, right? These contracts, they're out there, can you tell me about how many of those contracts the county signed off on? Has the county signed off on any one of those contracts? Are there any contracts that were still listed out?
Um, not sure I understand what you're, in other words, or, does someone own the hangar? Or did somebody else occupy it?
Well...
I think it says that there's somebody, there's the original leasing of the bill, or does some, has they sold that hangar? And the leasing is still the same? Or is it changing leasing? Who pays the, the bill?
Yes, there are hangers in which, a long time ago, would have changed hands, and it still had time left on that lease, and when that lease expired, the new owner made the lease payments.
Did you get, according to the lease, did you authorize it yourself?
I was there before my hand.
But your father did?
Yes.
Okay. Does he know, did he know that he had a, get an authorization?
Well, he was chairman of the Aeronautics Commission at the time, and, uh, the way the Aeronautics Commission was created by the state of South Carolina legislature, I believe that gave him the authority, because his signature was on leases along with other Aeronautics Commission members.
And they had, they had a reversionary clause, or something close to it?
Uh, some did, and some had none, much like...
So they knew that they were gonna have this happen thirty years?
Uh, if they had, if they had a lease with a reversionary clause.
If they had a reversion.
Yes, yeah.
But when the leases go back, when the leases come off, we wanna go back to the revisionary clause, is that correct?
No, that's possible, that doesn't, I don't think that's mandatory.
It is not mandatory, but it's suggested.
Yes.
Right? You've always said it's not mandatory, but you never said that the FAA suggests that that's the best way to regain control of the property.
It is one option.
What's the other option?
Well, I think as they said here, that they give the county latitude in creating alternatives to that. That could be, as my non-legal opinion, of course, but, uh, when you get to the end of the lease, you could have a reversionary clause in it. You could require that property be removed instead of reverting to the county, but that would be one option. Uh, with these, you could create a specific criteria in which, um, the Airport Commission and/or the County Council could entertain a renewal of the lease. And see, the hangar's been maintained, they've been compliant with everything. Does the council want to extend the lease for a part?
You know, and one of your, one of your suggestions, you said that we should be told that before we sign the lease. But isn't the lease being telling you that?
Well, for those people who got signed leases with reversionary clauses in it, they should be aware of that. I signed one of those, and the background on that, and I'll make it very, very clear on that. I was the airport manager in twenty-twenty. The county produced a new lease, okay? I was given that lease, no heads up, it says, hey, there is a new clause in here, and shame on me for not reading it, but I had a high level of trust with county staff that I would have been told that way upfront. I signed it, I signed one, so will they sign one? And it wasn't until someone more suspicious than me raised a flag and said, I'm not signing that because I'm, I'm giving my property to the county. So, I'm one of those guys in that, in that scenario. In June, the first five years of my lease came to an end. In May, I sent Mr. Cool to amend Mr. Lucas a letter relating to note that I would have intended to exercise my right to a five-year renewal for the first of two that I had. So that's one of the things that's not, that's not covered in the lease policy. What's gonna happen to me, for example? Who's played by all rules? The other question, of course, that goes even further than that with leases, there are people, at least one hangar, who had, say, a twenty-eight year lease with two five-year renewals. That's a, a dated Tetter lease, signed by Mr. Cool during twenty-twenty. What does this policy do then? And he does have a reversion clause, okay? What does this lease policy do to the guy who's expecting to have twenty-five years left on his lease?
What does the average lease draw money for the county? Please, the cost of, the average lease?
Uh, it's fifty cents a square foot for, I mean, I'm in a twelve-hundred foot square foot hangar, I think...
Fifteen, fifteen, you said fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifteen cents?
Correct.
Times twelve hundred?
Yeah.
Divided by twelve?
Mm-hmm.
What, we're talking about, whatever, forty dollars a month?
A lot closer, twenty.
Twenty dollars.
Yeah.
And so, when we talk about leases, and just being frank, when we talk about leases, we're talking, and I want everybody to know, we're talking about twenty dollars a month. That's what the average hangar owner pays the county.
Well, you've got hangers that are eight thousand square feet, they're paying more, but, yeah, it's small.
And at y'all's last point meeting, I heard a suggestion from you, that you thought that was a little bit... And you said we need to see TI about three to five percent a year. So twenty dollars would go up to twenty-two, twenty-three dollars, maybe a year. And that's what would help them, right?
Yeah.
And I just wanna make it clear, and I hope we all say it in a straight face, that from my perspective, we're talking about twenty-something dollars a month, if we have a deal with them, right? And we definitely have a deal with them, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so, when we say that council's doing something wrong, I would like to know, if someone signed a contract, no matter what it says, it's, well, maybe what they miss, that there's an expectation at the end of that contract, that contract's over. Now, every individual person has their own contract, and if it has reversion in it, you're bound to it, and county's bound to it. But even if it doesn't say reversion, because that's a word, there's no expectation that anybody other than county would have a right to that property in perpetuity for another thirty years. If someone had thirty and they gives them another thirty, that's sixty years. If the county wants to retain some semblance of order over there, right? It might be their will to say, we're not gonna continue at twenty cents, twenty dollars a month. And so, it would be up to you to make that decision, whether you wanted to change, and the county has paid an offer, and you said it's egregious. But understand that on the other end, what's being currently paid is probably twenty cents, twenty dollars, maybe forty dollars a month. So we gotta balance that, and, contract. We can talk about all this other stuff we're talking about, but what that is, is talking about these contracts, what we've got to deal with now are expired contracts. And so we've got to figure out, what are we gonna do with these contracts that have been expired? And you might want, and see, like you, okay, you said you're on the commission, right? But you're also an aircraft owner, and so it's difficult for you because it gets into many conflicting ventures, right? And so, we're listening to all this, and we hear it, but you have to understand, everybody watching needs to understand what we're talking about. But we're talking about twenty-plus dollars a month, less than two-hundred, twenty, forty dollars a year. You know, you might say, well, the land's not worth something. You've got to understand that amenities are just something else, and they're very expensive. I mean, just what the county pays in cutting grades, all the stuff that we do. And when there's an offer out there for what the county, we, we, I'm willing, I can't speak for anybody else here, I'm willing to listen to something as a counter to something reasonable. But it's very difficult, because everybody's got to have clean hands here, and when we say, twenty, thirty dollars a month, you see how difficult it is for us? I mean, you can say, it's egregious, and you can say, bad counsel, but you got to see it from my perspective, and I don't think it's just my perspective, we got to do something here, so we're gonna meet somewhere. But we've made you an offer, you already made an offer before, at the last point meeting. And you said it was egregious to go up there, but CPI three percent was fair for you. So if we're gonna negotiate something, let's do it fair. Let's, let's get, let's get down to negotiating something. Understand, the county maintains that property, and when they maintain it, it's theirs. Now, the argument is, whether you own a hangar or not, doesn't matter to me. We can talk about that. I'm not here to take anybody's hangar, but I'm not going to cadoon giving someone a thirty-year contract at twenty dollars a month and say, we can't do anything with that property because we have a contract, a thirty-year contract. They own it for twenty dollars a month, we can't do that, we can't. And so, that's my position on it. I would like to see us sit down and stop saying, bad counsel or bad Airport Commission, and let's get fair here. And I said it to the chairman when he was here, and I says, I know you know better, and you're saying it with a straight face, and I assumed there was pressure on me, but we got to get, we got, if we're gonna negotiate this thing, we got to get, trade off a few things. I have no problem doing it, but if it comes down to twenty dollars, twenty-two dollars, and do that for fifty years, and it gets up to about forty-eight dollars, whatever, then I don't report it. It's not fair to nobody. Mike, and I know that there are people who have sold their leases, right? We have people applying to get permission from the council, which is probably what you're doing, so that they can sell those leases, and you know what those numbers are? They're not getting twenty dollars a month, they're not getting two hundred, two thousand, I mean, we're talking a lot of money. And so you know what these things are worth, and we have to absolutely be sure that we're being fair to everybody. The council, if the council went and started doing that type of stuff, and giving these kind of things, council will get in trouble, because if I sold, if I sold a company vehicle, right? For way under market value, you see a problem with council, right? So we need to be conscious of the fact that we're gonna, we're gonna try to take all that into account. Now, I said before from the beginning, that I think the legacy side, that's a very important thing there. I think that we can show difference and, and really balance and understand that y'all are there for reasons, kind of what I've already said is the heart of that. But we got to get somewhere in the middle, not what we're talking about, you know what I'm saying? I don't want to be picked at head or shoulders, but once we start talking that, our ears are gonna open up a little. But right now, I can't, I can't do this.
Understand, let me reply, please.
Yes.
Um, I don't know that I've called council bad, okay? I thought, I thought you'd been handed some, uh...
Then let, let's retry that and say, I have certainly heard enough to know how you feel, right? And that's fair, and I'm not, I don't wanna, I'm not saying anything negative, but the situation is what it is. And for us to get to the end quickly, we're all gonna agree we got a problem.
But, okay. On the lease rates, I am not opposed to a fair lease rate. I simply included the information of what the practice has been over the years. Fifteen cents has been a rate that probably is for decades or at least three, you know, thirty-five years old, okay? And why was it done that, in fact? Actually, one of the things that the FAA says is that for new builds, they ought to offer very reasonable lease terms to encourage development. Simply just didn't increase over the years, did it keep up with CPI? I think I am the first person who ever wrote CPI increase into a lease at this airport, trying to make a change after, you know, forty years of it being absolutely the same. My, my issue with the proposed lease rates are this. The privately owned hangar is fully maintained by the individual. It costs the county absolutely nothing, other than that I had to drive a long, long round of, once every two weeks. Okay, I paid my electric bill, I don't need to pay, we pay taxes. We should not be treated like an airport that built its own hangers, maintains its own hangers, pays the electric bill, and all maintenance, and is charging those rates. There's got to be some compensation here, some consideration for the difference between the two. It is clearly apples and oranges, and you're talking about that little original airport, the proposal just to charge more for a hangar monthly than they do at Hilton Head. And even Hilton Head knows the difference. They've got T-hangers at Hilton Head and Buford. They're virtually in the same structure, same size. Thirty-six cent in one place, and on the other side of the road, it's twenty-seven, because they understand the difference in Hilton Head Airport, commercial airport, lots of amenities, and a resort. And I just actually don't think it's, the lease is unfair that we're trying to compare the apples at original to the oranges at Hilton Head. Now, some compromise of that, fully open to, for discussion, absolutely. Uh, just, again, making the point that, and by the way, I'd love to, to see that comprehensive analysis that Mr. Tetter referred to about hangar leases and, and research on rates. That's something the Airport Commission has not seen.
I think it was five to seven counties that could go within, you know, general areas, what my understanding is, I have some work. They did, under those, got, under those instructions, go to these counties, and did list T hangar, and sold and so forth. So if you disagree with that, you know, we'll certainly look into it and make sure, but, like I said, it, it's my understanding, grass over there is getting something out of it, you know? But is that same right?
Yeah, and I love the policy.
And that's just one thing.
Yeah.
And so, we, we have insurances, and don't just, and these, so these numbers are getting on up there. And so, we gotta make it, we gotta, we don't have a choice, has, has nothing to... And what's going on on the other side of the airport? I'm not talking about the other side, I'm talking about legacy side. And so, we don't wanna make a profit at all, but when we're looking at these numbers, and you say that, you know, eighty-three thousand dollars was the budget a few years ago, right? But it's hard to say that, because I just gave you a, a whole lot more than that, just off two things. And so we've got to consider all that stuff. And if you say that those numbers, that four to eight hundred dollars a month is unfair and unreasonable, we got to make sure that we're covering at least the cost. I'm trying to make a profit here, but it is our duty, it is our mandate, to make sure that we get this under control. Because if we put all the numbers together, your commission, what do you think does a legacy side cost the county in here?
It's basically a grass cutting.
Yeah, grass cutting and some water. Okay, how about insurance? We, we pay our own insurance? Not your personal stuff, not your... Hangar insurance. Not your, not your personal hangar, not where you're playing, insurance liability out there. There's coverage for certain liabilities out there, right?
Sure, just, just like a, just like a...
And it might be, it might be considered a roll-in as one, but it covers that, and there's a cost to that, right? If those weren't there, that cost would be less, right? And so we need to consider that kind of stuff, and that's what I've been looking into.
I'll pass this. You have the same policies as your public parks, right? You insure the public park?
Yeah.
Um, do you charge rates for people who want...
Um, do you, uh, charge rates for people who want to come and pay a hike through the park that...
It's apples and oranges. You're talking about, you're talking about a public situation, public and all that. And now, you're talking about private. And so, if, if I go and I provide, if I provide certain things for a business or someone's house, Jasper County, I'm in trouble. And that's what I'm saying, that's, that's what we're talking about, the whole private, right? So you're private, right?
It's a public area.
Okay.
It's a public airport.
Yes, it's a private hangar, but we pay our own insurance for our hangar. Our own insurance for our hangar. It is, it is a public care for that. And I don't want to get argumentative here, but I will say...
No, it's just...
Well, my, my, my point is, if I had a hundred thousand dollar boat that I pay taxes on, that I pay my personal taxes on, and then I go down to ship landing, and I put my boat in water, and I drive around for four hours, and I come back to the, to the public landing that Jasper County owns, is there a guy standing there with, with his hand out, hey, you owe me fifty bucks, you put your boat in water, using our public access? Why is it, 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 you're, you're trying to do the same thing for us. We want to pay, we want the, the, we want the airport hanger owners to pay a reasonable rate that is competitive with everybody else. You don't want to get out of that.
Using your way, right, a boat landing, let's say the boat landing.
Sure.
I can have, I don't have a boat. I can buy a boat and put it in the water, right? I can't buy a boat and put it on your land, or the land that you're on, because you put it, they, they structure there, and there has to be a time when we take that structure off the land, and you bring it back to virgin territory, or you get the rate, you go to rate, and we start. Why do you think we gave you, or this county gave you such a low rate for thirty years?
Because we were self...
You were putting money into it.
We were self-sustained. We didn't ask for any money, we didn't get any money from the county. Six thousand dollars a year.
So what happens is, after you talk about taxes, each year, or every year, you get a depreciation of your, your building, right? So when you do that, all this together, we have to have something come back, and that's how we get it back. That's, that's the whole reason for that. If you want to go back, we've actually given you, I would say, a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars over that thirty years, just would have cost you a little longer.
And amenities, being using the public.
But it isn't using them, you're, you're, you're not using them publicly. I can't go into your hanger, I can't use that property.
But you can, by all means, you can go build a hanger.
I told you, but that's not what we're talking about.
Well, what I'm saying is, is it sounds to me that you want us to make up the windfall of a one-point-six million dollar budget that we have this year for, for, for forty-two people that are there. Um, we didn't ask for, we didn't ask for, first of all, we didn't ask for runway expansion.
I'm glad you brought that up. I'm glad you brought that up.
We, we didn't ask for the two and a half million dollar ramp expansion.
In his reply to the FAA.
We have that one right here also, I think.
Right. The operating procedure in pre-16, now it exists, took mark over management airport subs, made dissolve the air, one ex commission. Since then, it was operating, but anyway, it, it actually says the pilots run the, are the, the airport, right? But really, in reality, if you think about it, the hanger owners only there because the airport exists, not the other way around. Think of it that way. And think of it this way. Think of it this way, another way, another way of everything. You, if you had this land, would you do, give this deal to your, to profit by this yourself?
Well...
We support, we're supporting that air, because the airport exists, because the residents of Jasper County have invested in that land. If we, if you weren't there, we could probably sell that land for ten million dollars. So you're, you're taking us and saying, you're asking residents of twenty-four thousand registered voters, or twenty-five thousand, or thirty thousand, wherever you want to use the number, and saying sixty people, or those hanger owners, are going to get benefit. And when they go, and when people go to road, want a road fix, a private road fix, we say no, but we're telling you, you know, just, just word back. Number two is, when you sent this letter out, I was irate, because you didn't send it out as a commission, did you? Was this the commission, or is this a hanger owner, or who was? And who are we dealing with? Because ethically, this is wrong. Because you're taking it from, this whole thing is about the leases. It's not about the commission. As we saw, you shouldn't be even talking about this, because you're, it's ethically wrong. Because you benefit by what is said. You're benefiting more than anybody else, and that's wrong. You, when you, if you look at the, the ordinance, it says revisionary clause. It actually says it in there, that this town is going to do a revisionary clause. You agree with it, you never read it, you never did it. The RNAI's commission, you never met. Nobody knew who was on the commission. Even the people that were on the commission didn't know they're on the commission.
What year, Mr.?
What?
What year was that, man?
What, 2020?
Okay.
You did not meet. And you said, oh, we have to wait for Danny Lucas. I was very clear that you didn't have to wait for Derry Lu, Jerry, uh, Lucas, Danny, thank you. You didn't have to worry about Danny Lucas, because you had three people, or you had to have three people say, I want to hold the meeting. Very clear, very clear. You didn't even have the time to look at the ordinance, but you have a hell of a lot of time, excuse expression, doing all this stuff. And it's all, what about the other things that go on? You, there's very little about that. It's always about lease. Be the commission. The commission is, you are the commission, you're supposed to advise us on everything.
But nobody's ever gave them any teeth to, to do anything.
They're, they're advising, they're, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter needs to change. It needs to change for this. It needs to change. It's not that way now.
I know it's not that way now.
It's not that way now.
Excuse me, please let me make a point, okay? Um, this airport commission in its form, uh, was met for the first time in November of 2023, okay? And, uh, so, in 2020, up in the office, I was airport manager, I wasn't owning, uh, airport commission. So this, uh, the, the old Aeronautics Commission, which had not met in a long time, um, after the death of Claude Dean, uh, it did not meet. Um, I was approached in September of 2016, and asked by Mr. Holden if I would be the dog here at the airport manager. Richard didn't want to do it, but I knew the processes, I knew what they call it on. I took it over. Um, and let me make this point before I forget it. You talk about the amount of money you're paying to mow grass, you know who mowed grass on the new airport for two years, virtually by himself? This guy right here.
As a manager, or as, as just a volunteer?
Well, I was the airport manager. Okay, I was the volunteer airport manager, and then in November of 2018, Mr. Holden hired me as airport manager, and, uh, I cut the grass.
As airport, because you were paid, you were paid to cut the grass.
Absolutely, but my whole point is, is it by myself, okay? And, uh, also was scrubbing off the toilets and cleaning the bathrooms. So, um, when, when we're talking about, uh, generating enough money here to help offset one-point-six million dollars of the, it's amazingly comedic that instead of, of gaining control of the spending, uh, that is way, way too high. And yes, I'm taking into consideration that three-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars of that is debt service, but that will hold away...
Next year?
Next year, and four years, four years, okay? So we'll see that drop hopefully. Um, we're not controlling the spending, uh, and we're, we're trying to use that uncontrolled spending as a reason for a huge increase. And again, I'll say, um, I don't oppose a fair increase, I do not oppose that, okay? But if you've got bad spending practices, you shouldn't be putting all of that monkey on somebody else's back. Again, two-way street, um, pay my fair share, but, uh, I, I shouldn't be, um, or anybody else, uh, be expected to, uh, cover expenses.
The airport, the airport operates at eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, right? That's, revenue, there is no revenue. The revenue is about thirty thousand dollars from, maybe a little bit more now, haven't looked at it lately, but from fuel, that's it. And that's not counting the other stuff. So it's eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. If we raised that rate the way we wanted to, it would be a hundred thousand dollars in revenue, right? That is not, you're not footing anything, not even coming close.
But they're not contributing to, the debt service isn't there. The, the debt service there is from the new expansion down.
Right. You're not even, you're not even worried about, you're, you're not even paying for that.
Well, they shouldn't be.
They should be, I know they are. That's our thing.
That would be clear, if we're not trying to generate money, offset any, and you may say it, and I hear everybody saying, that's not what we're trying to do. If we were trying to do it, we would make an effort at it, it wouldn't be what we're asking. And, but what we're saying is, forget about everything, what we can't do is what we've been doing. That's unethical, in my opinion. If, if I handle everything that we deal with, if I vote it away, what we're talking about there, or everything else, no sense of meaning being random. I shouldn't even go to church. Um, and we all know what's going on here, so let's, please, let's have a fair, like I said, when I said I don't want to be arguing, I wouldn't go by you, I don't want to. Bailey, Bailey, I consider her a very good friend, and I want to see a, a thing here, but at the same time, I can't say I'm going to do this to go along and get along. I want to see something that we both understand. And at the end of the day, even if we don't come to an agreement, we got to do something. Because leases are expired, some of them for a long, long, long time, and that's got to get cleared up. You know that after three, four, five years, whatever it's been, that some of these, you know, and we talk about collecting the money, I don't care about it. There's more, there's more liability for counties who've set up net money, in my opinion, in my opinion, than it's worth. It's nothing, we're not talking about nothing. But we're going to have to get to something. I don't want that called a long time here, but, but all I'm saying is, if we're going to resolve this, where there's some sort of agreement, then we're going to have to really understand that we're like, so far apart, and I want to see a resolved, I don't want to see an argument. I want us to resolve this.
But we want to be comparable to, to other entities throughout the United States of, of lease proposals of, of amounts. We're not trying for, the, the, the hanger owners aren't trying for a free run. Uh, they've all said that they don't mind an increase, you know, it's something that's comparable. Like I said, it's forty-year old, you know, twenty cents a foot is, is, is a long time ago, and it's way past that now, it should be dead anymore, we know that. Inflation, what, what it was forty years ago, what it is now is...
It's thirty-five cents a square foot to clean carpal.
Yeah, we, we understand that, but, um, you know, you can't, you can't lay it all on us at one time.
Sure.
You know, it's got to be over five-year increments.
But see, you're talking about, you're, you're wanting long currency, the problem I've got with that is, if there's a monetarization of that, if someone gets a thirty-year lease, and they do what they've done, well, how much, how much money have people subleased or made profit all of that at, at county, getting twenty, twenty dollars a month? You see what I'm saying? I'm not really asking you on film, I'm not giving those answers, but we know what they are, or have an idea, I'm just saying.
That's called capitalism.
Sir? I, I want to hear from you. I mean, this is general discussion.
Well, that's, that's how capitalism works. I mean, if you got a chance to make some money, you're going to make some money off your money.
I, I understand, but you do hear what I'm saying about the twenty dollars. One side here?
Everybody in this room hears you about that.
That's right, and, and also in capitalism, you sign a contract, you buy a bike, and...
That goes both ways.
This is a workshop. You don't have, we don't have conflict, we don't talk, we're talking over ourselves.
But both sides have to agree to that. But to make it clear, that there's nothing that says the county has to renew any contract, okay? Unless you have a contract that specifies renewals and periods and all that. So we don't want a deadlock here, we want to come to an agreement. It's very important for us all to understand, everybody here, we've got to come to a standard agreement, because what we're not going to do is what we've done for the last, last five years and not resolve it.
So, so how long has this been going on, Richard? Five years, right?
So this has been going on five years, not managing this thing, it's going back and forth and back and forth, and there's probably lawsuits, or I would assume, or there's been a lot of attorney and other staff, times, and effort, things going, this shit has to calculate that, but at the end of the day, an airport without planes is nothing. Um, and if we don't have pilots and airports here, it's, it is what it is. Common sense approach of this is we find an agreed-upon term. Contracts can be rewritten, contracts can be reworked. You can make things as advantageous as both do. The folks out there, the folks up here, and that way, the citizens of the county feel like they've benefited from it as well. It's, it's a, it's really, it's a common sense approach, um, and I think we can get there. Um, agreed-upon terms, if y'all can give some terms that look good, if y'all can propose some things for us to look at, um, obviously, we, it'll be a little bit of time with there, but at the end of the day, um, again, things can be redone, in my opinion, rewritten to make it there. Y'all own the, the property there, y'all maintain the property, um, at the end of the day, the stuff that is sitting out there, if you got a leaky roof, you're going to fix it, and you're going to do that the most cost-effective way. We have, if we own the thing and it's got a leaky roof, we have to bid it out, we have to go with this, that, and the other, and you, you look at it from a whole different perspective, and drive the cost of those things up. So there, there's a lot of give and take here, and I believe that we can come to a compromise to where the pilots win, the, the, we win, and the citizens win without, uh, it, it, I think this has been way harder than it should have been.
We agree with you.
We totally agree.
I mean, I almost think we've been messing with this for five years, that, I mean, I'd like to see, maybe it sounds crazy, we just start fresh, new, with new contracts.
Well, that's the problem, we, we want to start new, and then that's, that's the problem.
And, and let's get, let's bring business in, let's bring in, you know, some income to the airport, let's release some more land so more, uh, hangers can be built. I mean, I'd just like seeing a clean cut, just say, it's a new day, we're going to start fresh, we're going to redo these, these leases at this point, and, and move forward. Personally, I don't see the county taking them over, I just think that's, I mean, we can't maintain our ditches, um, and it'd be tough to, to watch that happen. At this point, anyway, maybe down the road, um, we can do that, but right now, I don't see it happening.
So Chris, you're talking about get everybody to pay up from the arrears of what they have now, to get everybody up to speed on what they have.
Start fresh, and say, here, here's your new lease.
Right.
And we'll start here.
From this way.
Yep. And this is the lease.
Yep.
If that's all legal and advantageous, that's the way to go. Everybody's playing from the same rootwood.
I think that, there's a lot of different leases out there.
And then the payment comes, everybody's payment comes in on the same day, you know, they're all due at the same time.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense for this.
And you just make it simple and not make it so hard.
No, no, reverberating back some of the other things, and I don't, like, twenty dollars a month doesn't sound like a, a fair thing to me, because I spent twenty dollars for bees, and one of my coworkers went in today, so...
I'm surprised you could do both of those. Somebody would pretty likely.
But you got to, I mean, we've got to have some good agreed-upon terms. We're not getting rich off of it by no means, but you, there are general liabilities and other things that we have to, we have to, uh, pay. I don't know what those numbers are, but like, you know, like...
Well, we, we want to pay, and we'll pay, but we want to pay a comparable rate that, that's, and that's what they have to aim. They want to have fair and equitable market values on this stuff. You know, they're, they know, they, they, they don't want you to gouge GQ public, you know, they, they want it to be fair across the board, so...
Why, 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 and you said, you know, the rates, what are those, three dollars? Well, I'm, it's funny, I did some, you know, I just did lease, uh, rental rates for, uh, for Hilton Head, um, I don't have it off the top of my head, I don't think I have it written down, but I sent, uh, Allen Dale, for instance, is for, for, till you run a hanger at Allen Dale, is a hundred and nine dollars a month. They haven't changed that since I was there twenty-two years ago. Uh, you go to Hampton Airport, which is a comparable airport, it's a little bit... Uh, you go to Hampton Airport, which is a comparable airport, it's a little bit smaller, but it's, it's close, it's in our demographics. Twenty cents a square foot for Hampton. Allendale was nine cents per month, per month.
That's not what Hampton told us when we did our research at the airport. Uh, David, the Hilton Airport manager in Hampton County, told us that a twelve month lease on a box hangar was two thousand dollars a month.
That's a box hangar, we're talking about teehangers.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, sorry, of course, the teehangers were two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, but the hangars that are in our discussion today are box hangars. So I don't know if I were comparing teehangers to box hangars.
Square foot, square foot, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
That's what we each work for, so it didn't matter if it was a circle.
You've got two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month for a teehanger, and then you, on a twelve month lease, and then you do a box hangar for two thousand dollars.
Next hangar.
That's Hampton.
Now, any other, what's the rank here, how about?
So, uh, I, I'll read you a research that we got. Uh, Hampton County was, um, I just gave you Hampton, Buford, Brandon, the airport manager there, uh, said that they didn't have any box hangars to compare to, but they were charging three sixty-two a month for a teehanger. Um, they had, uh, Colton County, I didn't, I didn't have a manager named there, but.
These are county owned?
These are county owned properties.
So if you have planes and they aren't paying property tax on that, right? No, so, let me ask you a question, so I'd like to bring someone into this conversation, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. Ricky, can you explain what you're talking about as far as the taxes and?
Mr. Arzola was trying to claim that part of the expenses that the county is facing is the liability at the airport.
Right.
And every hangar owner has to have hangar insurance, that the county requires the policy to agree that the county is covered, and that's what the hangar owners expense.
And that's, that, that, that I understand. That I understand. But there is also a liability policy, things that happen out there, right? And there's responsibility, if something bad happens out there, that the county's going to be tied up in, right? And I'm just using that as an example, these are just little things that I'm talking about. I'm not telling you all the expenses that are going out there. And the reason I'm not, is because I don't want it to be about that, and I don't want it to be about the other side of the airport, because that's not what we're talking about. At the end of the day, we have to deal with the contracts. And so we, what we're doing is trying to negotiate a future contract, but we're talking about dealing with existing contracts. They have to be fulfilled, tied up, one way or the other. You don't let a contract expire, especially a thirty year contract, and if you did that contract, just don't do anything. You might, but I don't know anybody that would. We have, right? And so we want to clear that up.
Well, that, there's been so many different contracts.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, some of them went away, some of them have been written one way, some of them went without reversion clause. I mean, it's all over the place, and to me, again, not stepping on you, but is that we start fresh, boom, and, and move on. And that, that's how I feel.
The, the Airport Commission agrees with that.
And now we just come up with a fee that, that is fair to, you know, to everybody, right? It's, it's not crazy, and.
Red and a hanger and owning hangers, two different things, and that's what we're comparing here with these other hanger, hanger plots. But teehangers of these county airports that don't have any privately owned hangars, they're all county owned hangars.
Right.
So we'll give you, we'll get some information on private owned hangars, of current lease rates, of, of what's going current in twenty twenty-five, and get you some numbers of that.
That'd be awesome.
And, 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 and work, work that way, we're, we're not.
We've got to get this done, man, we have to be in this thing.
We want to fill this, we want to serve this, so we can move on to some more pressing things at that airport. Mr. Chairman.
Ma'am?
Yes.
I think, uh, the element in the room is really not the leases, the element in the room is the FAA compliance plan. And you've got to get through that reversionary, who owns the hangars issue, you really do. I mean, I'm not arguing either way, I'm just saying that that's what they keep telling us. Although we keep saying we're just going to start new, do another land lease. We've been specifically told by the FAA that we can't do that.
Mr. Foulser, that's true to some extent, but the FAA has also said, it's up to you guys.
You're the sponsor.
So, we've been sitting here for five years debating this, and nothing happening, and, you know, if we can't explain to the FAA, hey, listen, we screwed up, we've had different contracts, there's been revision clauses, or have been, there's fourteen contracts missing, we don't know where we're at, so we just want to start off new, and this is how we want to do it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we had to backtalk.
That's okay.
I understand what you're saying, and that, that has not been part of the discussion.
No, it hasn't.
We have to reapproach to do that. Everything that we have heard, they were, we can't do.
But there was, uh, question sent to the FAA, to Ms. I don't have.
Ms. Clark?
Yes. Where basically she's saying, yeah, it was a totally different conversation, and she answered it in an email.
Right.
Than my conversation with her on the phone, which I was shocked, and I was like, after my conversation, I thought, okay, done deal. It is what it is, and then a questionnaire sent to her, and she answered it totally opposite, in writing. Have you seen that?
No, thank you for explaining that, because I was not there when you spoke.
Yeah, so, and I'll get, I'll, I'll send you the, the email, the, and I'll follow you, I just didn't get it.
He was copying the email from this one.
Was it?
Ms. Clark, I'm sure it was an FAA noncommittal saying, uh, we don't have any opinion on that. They'll come back and tell you what you can't do, and then they'll say, well, we can do whatever you want.
Right.
You'd be an airport sponsor.
What is the, what is the alternative to a rear hanging clause, and she says, well, then, the, the, at the end of the lease, they take it with them? Well, that's not much better, uh, for them, right? So, all I'm saying is, if you want to do that, we're going to have to reapproach the FAA and discuss that. I don't want to give the false impression that that is an option that we have already been granted.
No, but I get that.
Why don't we get a lease, why don't we get a nice, and a late, and present to you, and give it to the FAA, and let the norm establish, say, okay, this is, this lease is compliant with the FAA grant assurances, this will work.
Well, you use that, you use that court case, that court case as a lease, as the lease there, and that has a revisionary.
But there have been places set.
But it has a revisionary clause.
Well, and it's up to the sponsor if he wants to invoke that reversionary clause at the end of that lease or not.
But if we don't.
And, and, and from Ms. Clark, out of her own words, she said, if you don't have a list of, of multiple people for, for hangar rentals, then you can redo that lease, if it's up to you, you are the sponsor. That's within bounds of the grant assurance.
I think the technical difference is what she's saying is, you can't redo the land lease, but you could rent it.
That's correct.
So I, I'd be getting a little old on that, but it's a different form of, of occupancy that we have to negotiate.
Couple of, uh, points here. On the tax history of, Mr. Kim, you're absolutely correct, they, they now, starting, what, two years ago, anybody remember two years ago? Uh, they changed it from, uh, like, for forty years, um, they treating this like real property. So the taxes were going up on those hangars every year, every year, every year. And then they changed, and said, okay, look, because you don't own the land under it, we're going to treat it like a mobile home, or, or, or else, and began to depreciate, and so. Um, and, and, by the way, nobody got a tax refund, but the county changed their mind and said, we've been talking to you too much money for thirty years.
What is the, what is the average cost in, you know, tax on a plane, tax on the, on the hangar that you guys, is there an average number?
Well, no, because one year I got a hundred thousand dollar tax bill for my airplane, which is worth about forty thousand dollars. So I had to go back to the assessor's office, get my little sale from the FAA, of how much I paid for the airplane at the time that they rewrote it, but, uh, that's always changed. Uh, everybody who gets a tax bill in Jasper County for their airplanes is an Ashblom, Ashblom, not a monkey.
Ricky, if I, I think that, you're saying someone has the, you have the personal property tax assumption. It would be something like a total of twenty, twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
And we have that, this, we have to provide it, so you can look at it.
Of course, two different taxes, one on the airplane, one on the.
Right. But I would like to see what the two together are, I don't have the one for the hangar.
I have the one for the hangar.
I went online, I spent an hour or so looking at what the taxes that were paid. Um, I can tell you, I thought they got the smallest hangar on the airfield, and, uh, tiny hangar that taxes three hundred point dollars for that, not much. But, um, biggest hangar on the airfield pays thirty-five hundred and ninety dollars.
What was the total?
The total I came up with was sixty-three thousand and fifty dollars for the hangars.
In taxes to the county?
Yeah.
That's just property tax on the hangar.
Property tax on the hangar.
But including the others.
That's something to be taken into consideration, too. What did you say the total was?
Sixty-three thousand and fifty, that, and that's from the assessor's website. So, this is from the assessor's office, and it lists all the hangars that are on here, and it says that they collected twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. I, I can forward this to everybody.
Got many hangars?
Is that, is that, you say from the assessor's office?
Yeah, it's titled Jasper County Assessor's Office.
Yeah, those are just assessment values?
These are actually the market, it's actually titled twenty twenty-four market value assessments.
That's just the assessment, not the tax dollars collected.
Yeah. But it says estimated tax column, that's for twenty-two eighty, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars that I put in here, was, that was the tax estimate for the, on this document here.
How many hangars?
I, it's not numbers, but I have a hash to count, it's officially forty hangars.
Forty, forty-two? Forty-two?
I found records for, uh, thirty-nine, whenever I went through it, so potentially.
So they actually five hundred dollars, so that's some of the line.
What was the point on the leases, I know the expired leases, there were people on the video who had expiring leases, and four years. During this six year saga, I basically said, I'd like to renew my lease, here's my check. Check is clears, no need to process, no reply, um, in, in any of those cases. So, uh, just more to point out, some of these leases expired while people were actively trying to get a renewal, and were actively sending their, their money.
No harm to that individual who had that check to send there. I mean, they hope, they, there was no harm to them.
Yeah, it might have taken money from them, but not, not just the ability for them, they didn't take any money for five years.
Well, I, I would say that if you don't sign the contract, or you do sign the contract, you say, going to take the building? What do you mean?
Well.
What would the difference have been if the county had took that money?
Uh, if you would give me a lease, uh.
If, if you, if you would.
Yeah.
Right? But it's, be clear, if we, that's not, that's not a guarantee, right? And just like taxes, you know, those things are negotiated in leases. There are many people who pay the taxes on their buildings, right? It's all negotiated in a lease. We're going to make the assumption, I'm trying to clear it up here for me, because I'm not done. All these contracts are going to be different, right? And so we have to look at those contracts, and I suggest that we get five at a time, and we sit down and look at these contracts, because that's the first thing we got to clear up, those contracts, and then we go clear. You know, but we're getting, we're making this thing so big, that nobody wants to think about it. It's like, like attorney said in there, it's elephant, how do you eat an elephant, right? The live ham, right? But we, we got to get to the basics, and let's deal with those contracts, and you say you don't want to, but we have to deal with those contracts. And there are expired contracts out there, right? And so the council, y'all want to make a good recommendation to us, what you think it should be, because the council is going to look at that and take what we've already discussed. And we've done research. We've called all these places, people who've found out what teehangers, and we've talked to the FAA many, many times. It's been, everybody has, right? And so, you know, we'll figure it out. I want it to be agreeable. I hope that y'all understand what we're coming from, where you're at, where we started, where we're going to finish, and let's get there.
I'd like to know where you're headed with it.
Well, we all talked about it, right? We all want to come up with a.
Yeah, but things have changed since I saw the email after I talked to them, and she just covered everything that we talked about, basically. And I was kind of shocked with that, I mean, it really was like, you know, why didn't she say what she said then? But then in writing, she puts it down, it, it's, it's the opposite, and I, I, I find that quite disturbing, actually. So are you misleading me? You know, who do I, who, who the hell am I supposed to believe?
But regardless of that, Chris, we still, we want us to make a decision, right?
Yeah, but I want to get the decision done.
But I have faith that you're going to have input, and everybody here is going to have input, and we're going to come to the best decision we can. At least that's what I've seen in every decision, we don't agree on everything. But at the end of the day, you, 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 you are going to make a decision, that's what we're going to abide by. So I hope it's the best decision, it's not going to make everybody happy.
Well, what's happened lately is, we've screwed up, uh, the aeronautics, uh, you know, the community. I mean, we've done, we've not done the, the, uh, the community any good, I mean, they, we've got to fix our reputation. You know, there's a lot that we need to do to make this airport thrive again, and we can do it, we just need to take the ropes off of it, let it roll, and, and so, there's so many things that are, there's so much money that's been spent on things that wasn't really needed. You know, well, the FAA said it was, well, did the FAA really say that? I don't know, because they told me this on the phone, but I see an email in writing from the same lady I talked to that discounts everything we just talked about, in an hour and ten minute conversation, that John was on the line with me with. So, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but we've got to come to a conclusion and say, the heck with the FAA, we can move forward, this is the decision we've made, we're staying with it, and, and, and be done with it, because if not, we're going to be here for another five years.
Well, I say, again, come up with something, get it drafted out, we make sure that it meets everybody's, um, end of the bargain with everything. Send it to the FAA, they can come as dumb as bless this thing, and we all going about our business, and let's, we can't keep kicking this can down the road, but.
Can I just awkward something? When we talk to the FAA, right, they're going to say, we don't do that. That's the problem.
Yeah.
They're going to say, that's not our, our thing, that's, that's something local. So that's not going to be.
There's two.
It, it's between us, sent, that's what it is.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Here's one of the things.
Well, we have a guideline.
Let's put a timeline on it, please. Let's put a timeline on it to give this.
If I, if I made the FAA, we're in compliance plan with them, so they're going to be ringing a bell here for very short. Every few weeks, they ask us what the progress is.
Could y'all have something in less than two weeks?
I can, we'll have a little to work with.
Yeah, we'll see, yes.
We, we've asked with, with other stuff.
I mean, it's ten after seven, can we do it now?
Yeah.
Maybe make this point, okay? This resolution was drafted, uh, the day on it, and the communication with the FAA was July the second. Airport Commission met on July the ninth. Nobody brought this resolution before the Airport Commission, not a word about it, okay?
Being, I have to correct you, you asked me about leases, I told you, it was in the packet, and it was going to the county council, so you didn't know of it.
Yeah, see. Could I have, could I have it, could I have it, on, on July the ninth, we could have had a conversation about it.
Texting the man.
It went, nor where we found it, was, uh, somebody found it in the, uh, county commission packet. I read it.
I told you, I told you it was in the packet, I told you I had problems giving it to you before the council had seen it, so, you know.
But why, because those, those are the commission.
And, and it also deferred, so it's kind of an odd issue.
Well, here's, that, that's a whole other subject we need to talk about, is giving the commission, you know, the ability to make and, and do things at the airport, I mean, the county council shouldn't be making decisions. We should, I mean, it should be almost like the school, you know, through the school board, and they came to us for, for, for funding, right? I mean, commissioners should do the same thing, they should be out there, I, and I realize that we had a bunch of hangar owners on the commission.
That's right, it's a little odd.
Okay, but we could.
I would.
No, no, no. I would love to discuss this, and so, I'm going off the rails, Mr. Chairman, bear with me. I, I talked about, you know, because he's got a lot of background, right, and, and the, the other gentleman that didn't show up tonight, who's usually here, the military.
Lance, or Rich, or Stephen, um.
Yeah.
Has never really partaken in any of our county.
No, not that guy, the other.
He changed, he changed.
And then, I've got somebody who's sitting on the Airport Commission, we would have five people, but one, it would be a hanger over or, you know, and mix it up, so it isn't, you know, leaving that way. So, all I'm saying is.
I'm sympathetic to them too, because the leases are the issue that needs to be resolved. I mean, Lenny's got about three different people right now that want to build any, and we can't give a direction because we don't have the.
No, I'm ready, I say start building.
That's what it's talking for five years.
So, I get it, but I also wanna keep you guys clean and out of trouble with your recommendations, because this is right. So, once we get through that, I think the Airport Commission is gonna have a whole lot more success in looking at the operations of things and moving forward, without that baggage.
Well, that, things need to come through then. I mean, to be quite honest with you, I may be speaking out of term, they should be looking at hiring. The people who run the commission should be looking at hiring the airport manager overseeing, and looking at the budget, and then.
The, the power comes with responsibility, and you have to be accountable to it. So, if you want a separate organization to do that, you will never, as a county council, relieve being the sponsor of the FAA. So, you have to be confident, because I work for you, and I am your agent now with the FAA in doing that. You have to be confident that whoever you give it to, it's not going to be us doing that anymore.
Right.
Right, you have to be confident. It's just, it's a structural discussion that you need to have.
But, and that's one of those things, growing things too, it's kind of, it's a business or whatever, it's just structured.
So, I wanted to add something on, it goes back to the lease situation. So, we were talking, you mentioned that we need a clean slate, we got this lease going for that, and that lease going for this, or whatever. In Resolution Twenty-five forty-seven, we have put together a recommendation, it's included in there, for categorizing these different leases. So, the leases that were old leases, this is how we'll deal with them. They have, they have these terms to deal with, and they'll give them a, a limited lease, so they can sort out this thing, and they'll understand that there's a reversion at the end of it. And then, this other group they have, and it's in the resolution.
Why do they have to be different though?
Well, because we gotta, we gotta, we gotta bring everything to equal, because if we got this lease going, that lease that goes says that, and if this lease says that.
That's what I'm saying, get rid of all those things.
But they're already leases, we're already in those leases, we gotta be able to, that's, that's up to you guys.
But why don't we have the.
I'm just giving you the information here, saying this is, this was the attempt to.
But that's what the problem's been, as the years have gone on, there's all these different things everywhere, some's been lost, this one says this, this one says that. That's the issue we have, and we need to get away from it.
The tail's wagging though, we gotta get this thing.
This is a great time, this is a great time, last five years.
Just let.
Go ahead.
I mean, I'm not the earth shaking to say, because I'm doing this, I can't say anything really in depth. But I just, you know, like, my question is basically, if you became more than advisory, or became a true commission, and you had some teeth, can you be negotiating these contract, these leases, would that be a conflict of interest with another?
Well, the board, they would have to change, that was my point that I was making, we would switch it up, bring in some other people, so that it wasn't, because it can't be all in one way.
That's what the air. Control, control at that point, they did.
Yeah, that was from now on, there was five to forty years.
Yeah, that, that's what it should be.
Yeah. This is a great time, the last five years have been a train wreck, and it's a good time to start, and, and get this leasing behind us. And, and have, have an Airport Commission making decisions, and the airport's still one person, which has gone on for the last five.
I agree, it should be.
And, and the wasteful spending that's going on, over the, over the top, we see it, the tax carriage shift, you know, it's, 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 they've got a great time to straighten us out.
That's why I like it, I'm just one guy.
Yeah, no, I'm with you on that.
I think a critical point here is that the lawyer, should be writing stuff, I'll send it to the FAA, about anybody else's, simply. He may have talked to Lenny recently, and he may have just communicated with Mr. Boojum or Mr. Lucas, but, you know, any recommendation or any comments that we make, I think, that fall on deaf ears, that you may have listened to them, but I don't think, when Mr. Tedder sat down and started creating documents, he sure exactly what they're thinking about, doing right, right, about the airport, so, it's just fact, we can change that.
Well, there, there comes, there comes a problem, is, yes, do it right by the airport, but what about the residents of the county? And twenty dollars of, and the sticking point for me is twenty dollars a month, a month, right? When I can't, you can't get a hammer for team, right, for one person.
But, but they're paying.
You get four till.
We pay two thousand for our hangers. You just got the smallest hanger in the airport, he pays twenty dollars, we have the largest.
Two thousand what, rent?
Yes. Twenty-eight cents a month, nine seven thousand square feet.
So, two thousand, so you pay, do you have anybody in the airport, in your hanger?
Yes.
How many?
People have women hangers.
How many? How many pay for that? So, that's divided among eight people, right? Okay, there again, you're taking the, we're, we're giving you a good deal, and you're using that deal to.
It's not for you to give a good deal.
What?
It's not for you to give a good deal. The authority is ours, you were making a mistake in thinking that you can use this for a piggy bank. That's what your mistake is, you go out and create all these bills, and crap that you spend around the airport. And then you come to us and go, give us your wallet, that's what you're doing.
No, we're not, we're just trying.
That's exactly what you're doing.
It's your building, but our private.
I'd like to go back to the setup of the Airport Commission. The council can delegate a guardian, but it can't, it's responsibility. The coun, the council will be responsible for the decisions, whether you make them, or we make them. Ultimately, we're, we're talking about something that can't happen, because the council has to, you have to be an advisory board. I have said it a hundred times, we want you to be an advisory board, let's make sure.
Why can't they be in the mission, so?
Because who's gonna, who's responsible if something happens? At the end of the day, the council is always gonna have that responsibility. Like I said, we can give them authority, we can give them.
They have their own.
They have their own budget and everything.
Well, they shouldn't be running their own budget too.
Yeah, I mean, like I said.
That's constitutional, that's constitutional, they're not constitutional, that's the problem. We're the constitutional office, we're responsible.
County law did that, okay, with the ordinance, Twenty-Twenty Three, the ordinance was dissolve the old aeronautics commission.
And I was on the committee that, I was on the committee, I was on the council that day, I was the only no vote.
Well, anyway, but when the aeronautics commission was constructed or approved by the state legislature, as a special legislation on behalf of Jasper County, they clearly outlined in a two or three-page document what the authority of the aeronautics commission was. And the aeronautics commission functioned under that until Twenty-Sixteen, and then, pretty much nothing went on air, aeronaut, aeronautics commission wise. The county, before formally dissolving it in Twenty-Twenty Three, I think in Twenty-Nineteen, with that ordinance, created the advisory on the airport commission, and did not formally dissolve the aeronautics commission until the ordinance in Twenty-Twenty Three. So, somewhere from nineteen forty-nine until Twenty-Sixteen, the airport had its own bank, its own bank account, paid its own bills. The only thing that the county, county paid was the electric bill for runway lights and a couple of small cars. And, and this, in Twenty-Eighteen, I wrote a check, book, all the records, Laura from Miss Berries, turned it over to her, closed the airport's bank account, and the county took over, took over, basically paying all the bills. So, I just wanted to let you know, from nineteen forty-nine until Twenty-Eighteen, Twenty-Sixteen, the aeronautics commission had the authority to run the airport, sell property, basically, do whatever we need to do around the airport.
There seems to be some back and forth on what the FAA was requiring, and what it did say. So, I would like to have three questions, that can be formally written down and asked of the FAA, because what Chris said is absolute fact. But it's not just that compensation. I felt that for years in my other job, every time one law given, one taken, they say this, and it changes. We need something bright, from the, and I would think one of the questions would be, reversion. Is this, is this a mandatory thing, is this a suggestion, is this something?
That's it.
So, on that page, you wrote it. It's not mandatory, it's not mandatory, it's a suggestion, that is the way that you play it. Because that's the way you get control of the property that you want.
And you can ask them.
You have to have some time that that property goes back to us, and so, it goes back to the public.
Who's us?
What?
Who is us?
To the county, to the residents, no, not, not, no, to the residents of Jasper County.
Okay, there we go, that's all right.
But I wanna be clear, what the FAA is full of, time and time again, is you don't have to have a reversionary law. And we say, okay, then what else can you do? And they said, well, you can require that, at the end of the term, that the owner takes it with it. I would suggest to you that both of them are lousy, right? But I don't want you to, to, to say, you don't have to have a reversionary laws in there, and, and something better than picking up and taking it is an option. Because I've not heard anything better from the FAA.
A good point here though, is that.
And we specifically asked that question, Lee, Lee's supposed to specifically ask them at the termination, can they renew the lease? And I, I heard her say, you can't do that, because you can only do it for the amortization of the asset. Now, if somebody puts more money in the hanger, you can negotiate that type of thing. So, I want you to understand, we're, you know, we're dealing with that bureaucracy and those answers. We're trying to get everybody, you know, as best as we can, to the right conclusion.
We have just two quick points, one, I don't believe that's correct.
Okay.
And we've talked to the FAA as well.
Right.
So, it is, either, it either is or isn't.
Right, or it is today, and maybe not tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly. And, and the second is, if you built the hanger yourself, and I was up on the roof in August, I remember it very well, you don't have anything to amortize the hanger against. The only person that pays is the three hundred, not twenty dollars, guys, it's about three twenty a month for me, but in my, the only guy that pays that is me. And I don't have anything, I don't, I don't have anybody else in there, anybody who wants to spend a night, can stay, if there's a airplane, I fill my air, etc., etc., and so, everybody else. So, just, just beware, I've got nothing to amortize that hanger against, except that I'm trying to take care of my airplane and be a good citizen on the airport. That's, that's what I would say, I don't think, in the end, I think I'm pretty much fine, that there's any requirement by the FAA to have reversals, yeah. And one other point, if I may, there's about a dozen airports in South Carolina that have airport commissions upon the airport. But there's some that are bigger than us, there's some that are smaller, but they're valid.
It may be a commission, it may be a separate authority, there are probably all kinds of avenues that you can.
No, they have.
Right.
Tell you the truth, I would like to have a, a, a commission, not a commission, but a enterprise zone, and it solves everything. Enterprise zone, so they, the county stays out of everything.
Well, it'd be nice if there was a separate authority with their own bonding capacity and all that other stuff, because that is precisely why the change today, Dean made a great point of going through the history of that, is because, you know, the previous council wanted to do the extension, and wanted to get the grant fund, right? And in order for the FAA to do that, they were not willing to do that, with the aeronautics commission, they wanted to do that with the county as a sponsor, with the full faith and credit behind all that stuff. So, that's the reason of the change. The county is stuck with that obligation of that grant funding, and so, we may be able to do something different, but as Mr. Arlilow said, I don't think the county council's ever gonna absolve themselves of that responsibility for insurance.
Did you have a second? You said we had three. Well, I would say, let's time three. Okay. One's supposedly already answered, I asked some simple questions, that the answer's changed. Mr. Dean's on the phone while I was talking to her, and I asked things like, the twelve second, if thirty years is done, can we, can the council redo that, just like it was? And the words were absolutely not, right?
Absolutely not, but I did ask the question, can I, at the end of my lease, if I've been a good guy, done anything right, can I get a new lease?
And another.
Yes.
Another thing that said, she said was, and understand, this is just a conversation that I remember the way it was, and it could change three times as we said. If that thirty years is up, she said, how she would come in here quickest was over a discrimination suit. In other words, she would almost require you to give deference to a lieutenant, because if there's more, if nobody else is wanting that hanger, right? But if you have three or four people wanting it, and you give deference to one, that's when I get involved, when you defer, as a little bit of discrimination. So, there was all kinds of things here, and it's nothing, nothing easy about it, but all I say is, let's all bow our heads and keep bowing.
And I think that's just limited on if there's, if we have additional land and ground leases, or anything that can be built on, then that doesn't play into it. But, once we fulfill all of those areas for private, kinda, or where you all build hangers on, then that's when it runs into a quagmire, I believe, per FAA, if I remember that correctly.
If you had a weightless legal, or. I think that the county, or airport, county-owned buildings, but one of the, the things that's, and it's gonna be my last point, I promise to show that back to this. I get to the end of my lease, okay, my hanger's old, it's still in great shape, might be better shape than a lot of the ones that are out there that are doing it. But the reality is, is that if the, if the county says, I don't want the building, you have to tear it down and remove it, okay? I tear it down and remove it, I turn around, and apply to build a new hanger on the same spot. The FAA says, now, the county policy says I can give you twenty-five to thirty years on the new hanger. Tore it down perfectly good one, and hauled it off, and now I'm allowed to spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars to build a building there, to get a new lease, so. It is the insanity of, of that that I find just mind-boggling, that you can't, FAA doesn't want you to extend the lease or offer a new lease to a guy who's got absolutely perfectly serviceable hanger, but if you tore it down and hauled it off and applied building new one, they would say, cool, give him another.
Yeah, but that's, that's, you're getting the value, that's the value, that's the money, that's where the money is. It's not that the hangar's there, you're investing another fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars, that's the difference.
But it doesn't go to.
It may not, it may not be logical, but that's what there is, that's what the FAA is saying, because you're inventing, you're getting more money back to the county, and you go scarfing a spare one.
Nobody has, let's just do what the FAA suggests, instead of the thirty-year lease, they say forty to forty-five year leases, if you.
Up to, up to, up to fifty years.
So, I think right now, all we're doing is running right.
So, let's, let's do a date, like he said, a timeline, and let's give a, how many days?
You tell us, we gotta do it pretty quick here, because we got FAA.
They got FAA, I see all, we got, I definitely, I can see it, the resolutions on the agenda for next Monday's meeting. Yeah, I saw that, with just a few minutes.
Can I elaborate on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I want you to elaborate, will you?
No, I just saw that, that ordinance was up for discussion on a Monday night, on a Monday night agenda.
They continue to do that, they defer, it comes back, and they can do whatever they want, obviously, they're in charge of it. We, we as staff, we agree, we agree with the insanity, okay, of what you designed through. But we also are being open to give the FAA updates, which is kind of maddening when.
The airport manager, the airport manager was terminated in June, in July, the county attorney retired, I mean, we got some hardship cases, we can also go to the FAA and say, hey, might need a little bit of time, we've lost our airport manager, we got an interim manager, our town attorney's gone, you know, I mean, you can, you can work with FAA. I mean, so we can probably get a little bit of time, I'm, I don't want this to go to another six months, I don't want them doing another six days. I don't want this to go to another six months. I don't want them doing another six days.
Well, it's procession, especially because it's not only affecting you, but it's affecting the land that we have, I think. And nobody has said that too, but you know, trying to get self-sufficient and you sort of intimate that off of the legacy portion of the runway. You know, I know you can be anti-airport and say we don't want to develop the rest of it. We've got a whole lot of beautiful, developable property at that airport. We have a whole lot of interest in that and spreading the love and spreading the cost because most, a lot of the sunk-in costs that we have in the airport is there to serve the entire area.
I agree. But nobody's gonna go there until there's a viable lease. They're not gonna put one. That's why nothing's happened in five years.
Until the lease policy's there. We're really feeling that pressure from people that are trying to get in there.
Can I just mention just one little thing too? I think there's some legitimate concern here that that's the same people with all these hangers forever, amen. That's really not accurate. There're probably not more than four or five out there that are in the same hands.
Change again.
Early on. Mine's been through four different ones. I couldn't say how many others, but I mean, almost none of those hangers stay in the same hands for longer, ten years, fifteen years at the most.
And that was all in compliance with the original lease.
Yeah, but what I haven't been able to break free from is the ownership issue about the county owning the hangar. Now, we can, I'm not arguing for that. I'm just saying I can't break through that issue. So, we may have that in our laps, that the county may have to be the owner and have a rental agreement with you versus you having a land lease.
I don't see that in the airport.
Okay, all right. I'm just saying that may be an option and that's not the end of the world if that's the final option.
The only issue is that it's just gonna be taken.
That's right. Yeah, you have to work that through.
Or maybe, or maybe it's paid for too.
I'm not, I'm not advocating.
Nobody ever set up a time.
One question.
It's good to me, I guess that's what I wanted. That's good to hear to me.
Mr. Fulham, it would be very beneficial if we sent the ordinance, the lease policy documents to me in a Word format.
So, what's that, resolution?
Well, not the resolution, but the lease ordinances, because this refers to amended lease ordinance. If we get those documents in a Word fashion, it'd be simple to go through and do some red lines adjustments that we could present back.
I'm all for that. I just don't have it.
Leonard, can you do that?
I will. I do have it printed, but I will definitely look for a Word document.
Yes.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I got it in PDF. I got it in PDF. If I have it, I'll work on it.
Yeah, well, okay. I can pay somebody to convert it if I need to.
Let me see. I might, I mean, I know I have PDF, but I might have a Word as well.
Leonard's dating the transition, but he's got those records, so we'll come.
Don't have none?
Put the date. Put the date.
What's that?
What's the date?
The date.
Next stage.
The next stage? Well, one would be great to get the document in a format that we could work with. And, you know, it's pretty much been all, I've been living here for weeks.
Mr. Chairman, I think it may be even simpler than that. I think what the council's really asking for is what are lease rates that you find acceptable? Is that pretty much it? Lease slash rental rates that you find acceptable? I think that's the first stage. I think the council's heard the other questions about structure and about renewals and ownership and the in and the ordinary stuff, that we can have those discussions with the FAA. I don't think you need to.
Yeah, am I wrong?
Is anyone here okay with that?
I don't. I think the revisionary is the big part. I think the other dollar.
Well, I think that's our challenge to have that discussion with the FAA.
And would it be appropriate if we had staff, someone from council, maybe someone from the commission all on that? Where everybody's hearing it from the same feed whenever we're talking to the FAA?
Yes, sir. I think.
That thing they said, it needs to be in writing.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I think the order is, you give us what you think is acceptable. They have, they have taken a shot at that in my right hand, so we all done that in the resolution. So, you send what you think is acceptable and, Mr. Chairman, we talked about this the other day. Is that pretty much what you want, something from them?
Yes.
And then, those are numbers and those are going for numbers. And we've got to talk to the FAA about reverberating laws, ownership. But our good standing. But know that we're doing that in good faith and trying to get the answers that we all want, okay?
And those letter back from the FAA, I asked, my letter I asked specifically about. In your reinsurance, it talks about a thirty or thirty, the hangar order should be offered a thirty or thirty-five year lease to amortize their investment. But my question was, it mentions nothing about what, it doesn't exclude that existing hangar in other words. So, if there's a person who three years ago purchased a hangar for eighty-five thousand dollars and he obviously would like an opportunity to amortize his investment. It's not a new build. It was a purchase, so.
That's an excellent point, Richard. We can have that discussion.
And again, they reiterated, well, it's a reword.
Well, that's my goal, to work with them to find something that works for both of you all and to submit it to them in unison and be done.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
I'll just go through.
Not at this time. App even moving forward. Sorry, Zellam?
Brown. Or how?
To me, I'd like to have a motion, any discussion, any no discussion. Do I have a motion?
I'll give a motion to the juror.
Do I have a second? Any comment, or none?